How you guys doing? Good, welcome. Before we open our meeting, we're going to get our invitation on our identification with Michael Christmas Senior, who's going to give us our prayer, followed by me reading you in the Pledge of Allegiance. Following that, we're going to do some award presentations, okay?
Let's pray. Father, for me to be here this evening to open the prayer, House of Meeting for March, around, there's a lot of folks here this evening, a lot of work to be done. I pray for the council, Lord, they have an awesome responsibility. You hear a lot of things, expected to do a lot of things. I just pray that you be with each one. We help them make the right decisions concerning this meeting, concerning the problems, and other things that go on at this meeting. Thank you for the privilege of being here, and I also want to say this, Lord. I pray that for some here that do not know you, in the pardon, forgiveness of sin, Lord, they will come to know you as their Savior, dear Father. They'll be happy the day they do that. I pray that you bless now. Help us all in Jesus' name, I pray. Amen.
Amen.
United States of America, and the Republic of Oregon, one nation under God, indivisible, free of sin, justice for all.
Thank you.
There's no comment here. My, we're going to present, tonight, we're going to present our quarterly Spirit of Oak Hill Award, and nominations were made, and the, committee, the Spirit of Oak Hill Award Committee met, and picked out an individual and a business for the Spirit of Oak Hill Award, and the mayor is going to present the award for the individual tonight.
Brad Compton. I don't have anything prepared because Brad called me when I was running for mayor, and we had a nice, long talk. So, Mr. Compton seems like he's doing really good things for the kids. He was real concerned about our park. And I think you're a good man, so we got something for you. So, we thank him for all your input.
Yeah, we're going to get your picture.
We've got to get it in the middle where we can see it.
You know I don't like stuff like that.
A little pledge on it for you, too. Thank you.
And for those of you that don't know, Brad has been very instrumental in helping us with the park renovations. Well, he's not actually down there doing them, but he gave a very valuable input for the park and for the Little League. So, he has protected their interests. He works down there tirelessly with the Little League, and several other things. He helps with the Oak Hill basketball, the youth basketball. So, if you see a kid somewhere, you're probably going to see Brad. And we really appreciate everything you've done, Brad.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And now Terry Van Busker will present the award for the business.
I'd like to present the Spirit of Oak Hill Award to the Black Bear Bakery. Been in business now for a little over two years, or close to two years. Brittany has known him for quite some time, several years, and she's always there to help with churches, schools, anything that involves a child. She used to also be with Head Start. She would donate every time they had a party or something. She was donating cupcakes and everything else. So, my pleasure to present to Black Bear Bakery with the Spirit of the Awards. Yeah. A little one, you want to hold this?
Do appreciate the help businesses in our community. Keep on supporting them so that we can keep them around.
We'll have a presentation on the Ice Collaborative and Youth Prevention with Katie Johnson.
Take one of the passes around. My name is Katie Johnson, and I work with the Fayette Prevention Coalition and the Fayette County Health Department. And what the ICE Collaborative is, it's a prevention model that's based on the Iceland Prevention Model. In Iceland, they had a really high, big problem with teenage drinking. It was in the 90s. Fifty percent of the kids said that they'd been drunk in the last 30 days, and that was their 10th grade kids that they surveyed, and they were seeing problems on the street. They started working with kids who got into trouble in treatment centers, and they said, whoa, we need to do this. Need to give them positive things to do before they get into trouble. And so, they developed a community. They surveyed their communities, and they got communities strategizing on how they could protect their kids from early initiation of substance use. And that's what we're doing here, and we're near five in Fayette County. We survey all of our 7th through 12th grade kids. We ask them about their substance use, but we also ask them about risk and protective factors in four domains where they operate. So, you have this in front of you. So, we see that kids are either with their family, they're at school, they're with their peers, or they're in their leisure time. All of those inside of their local community. If we look at our data from our kids that tell us what they do with their family, what they do in school, how they feel about it, we can see where we're being protective, where maybe every night we have dinner together, or maybe our parents don't know where we are in the evening. So, we're being risky. But we can look at that data, and we can see where our community needs to be bolstered, and where we need to support our kids with programs, like coaches and parks. And we can see, you know, maybe that unlit area of town where kids are hanging out unsupervised can have a change. So, we have all this data, and it's not my job to tell Oak Hill how to best protect their kids. What we do is we take this data that looks like this, and we put it up into different stations, and we have you walk around and look at the data and strategize on how you can better protect kids. The goal of the Iceland Prevention Model is to delay the initiation of substance use. We know if we can delay that initiation from 13 years old to 16 years old, we can change the whole trajectory of a kid. By the way, their brains develop, the older they are, should they experiment, the better chance they have of graduating from high school, and the better chance they have of not succumbing to addiction. You know, we know that substances take over the brain, and the younger they are, that the kids experiment, the more trouble that they're going to have getting away from it. So, what I would like to do, I would love to have 20, 30 minutes with the council or a community meeting to look at this data, maybe bring Oak Hill stakeholders together, and talk about strategies. What can we do in their leisure time? What are we doing well? You know, how are our kids supported through sports programs, through programs like Coda that's introducing music and arts and robotics? What about our faith-based groups? Who in our community can really support kids? And then we can talk about families. You know, what can we do so that parents are holding kids accountable? What can we do so our parents are picking the kids outside with somebody that's doing something positive rather than stuck inside on a screen? You know, whatever you see, your solutions may be different from over at Midland Trail. The data is certainly different. A lot of our kids are using about the same amounts of substances. We see problem areas in the county. That's why it's really nice. Our data is school-specific. So, we know that kids who feel that school is helping them meet their goals are two times less likely to initiate early substance use. We know that kids who are out after midnight are three times less, more likely to be getting into trouble. And we know that if a kid's friends are using substances, they're about 10 times more likely to be using substances. But what we would like to do is either here or at a special meeting, bring these posters, have you walk around. This one is community and peers. So, these are the domains where they are. This is what our kids are showing. Seventy-three percent said it's good to live in their community. This is Oak Hill Communities. Forty-five percent, they say they want to live here in the future. Eighty-nine percent say they feel safe in their community. All right, 55% said there's a great deal of social life in my community. Right. So, you know, it's really fun to talk to the kids. A lot of times, the kids will help us in these data. We call them data dissemination meetings. And this is some of our substance use. So, 9% of your high schoolers are saying they were under 13 when they started vaping. 16% were under 13 when they started using alcohol, and 7% were under 13 when they first tried cannabis. So, we can, you know, if you, I don't know what would work best for you all, but to have a special 30 minutes at a city council meeting to really, I like getting people up and talking about it and moving around and looking at the data, or if we can organize a special meeting.
Katie, if you'll contact me, maybe tomorrow or sometime this week, we'll set up something.
Awesome.
And then start putting order out. Because other people can attend besides council, right?
Yes, yes. And our families, caregivers are a special group. You know, it's always the same parents and caregivers that are showing up to meetings. We would like to figure out a way to get a broader scope of our caregivers. There's some data on the back of this, too, if you want to look at it. Thank you.
Now called over, the City Council meeting, City of Oak Hill, West Virginia, March 11, 2024. The clerk will now call the roll.
Mayor Charles Briscoe.
Present.
Councilman or counselors from Ward 1, Terry Van Busker.
Here.
Roger Evans.
Here.
Diana Janey.
Here.
Counselor from Ward 2, Chris Gill.
Here.
E.J. Elder.
Here.
Counselor Large Janice.
Here.
Thank you very much. I have a reading and approval of minutes. You all are familiar with the minutes, so you can go ahead and vote to approve them.
Motion to approve the minutes. There you go. Anything?
Awesome.
Motion's been properly moved and seconded. Any questions on the motion? All those in favor? All opposed? Motion's carried. Thank you. The treasurer's report. You all remain with that. If anyone wants to do a motion to accept it, that'd be fine.
I'll make a motion for the treasurer.
Give me a second.
I'll second it.
Motion's been properly moved to accept the treasurer's report. Any question on a motion? All those in favor? All opposed? Motion is carried. Terry, do we have any correspondence? Correspondence. Did anyone sign up? You need to check in that right now. Is it Arliece?
Yes, it is.
Arliece Green.
Hello, everyone. Mayor, I want to thank you all for having me to come and speak at your meeting. My name is Arliece Green. I'm a public affairs specialist with the Small Business Administration, and I'm here because of the disaster that took place August 28, 2023. And we are promoting, we're presenting the SBA Disaster Program for businesses. This program is really good to help the business to restore from economic injury. Now, it takes a business six, at least six months to a year or beyond to find out they have incurred this injury. And we are trying to get the businesses to go ahead and take advantage of this program to get their business restored back to where they was before this disaster took place. Now, the benefits of this program is that there's no payments for 12 months, there's no interest for 12 months, and the term is up to 30 years, and you can get up to $25,000 unsecured. So, we encourage you to go ahead and apply for this loan. You can borrow up to $2 million. So, at this time, I will see if anyone have any questions that they need to ask me about this disaster program that SBA is offering.
You said August 28, 2023. What was that?
The severe storms and flooding and landslides that took place here in West Virginia. And your county is eligible for the economic injury because of the primary counties that got affected. So, your county is a continuous county, so that makes them eligible. So, like when the disaster happened in the primary counties, it affects the continuous counties because all the counties work together. They support each other businesses. So, when a disaster took place, some businesses may not be making as much money as they were making before this happened, and it caused a reduction in their sales, the revenue that they're bringing in. And so, we're just trying to get the word out so they can get this program and help them to restore or rebuild back to where they were before this storm happened.
And that's just for businesses, right?
Yes, for your county. Unfortunately, it's just for business because it's a continuous county. Any other questions? Thank you for having me, and I left some flyers and my business cards over there. Feel free to get one. If you need to contact me, feel free to call me at any time. I'll be happy to answer any questions that you may have. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Green. Moving on to unfinished business. Number one, an update on all efforts to date, future actions, and timeline to execute the action decided by council in December council meeting, auction of the former BB and T building.
I have, I spoke with John Stump last week and retained him as our counsel to help us along with the selling of the BB, the former BB and T building. He agreed to work with us and told me that the first thing that we would have to do is terminate the lease with the building commission, which leaves the building commission with no money to pay the bonds. So, then they would have to sell the building. The building commission has to get together and vote to do that. We can request that they do that, but we can't tell them that that's what they have to do. They have their own decision on that. And if it goes through to the building commission and they sell it, they do not have to have an auction. Because you would have to still go through the process of selling it and, I guess, reviewing the offers. And he wants to first check and make sure that there's no prepayment penalty on those bonds. I'm pretty sure there isn't, and he was too, but he wanted to check and make sure. And then he wants to have a little bit of time to to secure the details, get us a better timeline of things that we do. The other way that we could do it is at this, we would have, we could terminate the lease and auction, or terminate the lease, and then they would give it. We don't terminate the lease in that one. We would auction it and do terminate the lease all at the same time as the auction. So, he said that's pretty tricky to try to do, and having an auction for a building like this would also be difficult. So, he suggests the building commission. To me, what's the balance of that? On the loan, it's like one, $1,480,000, maybe more than that. We've paid, because we've only been paying interest for a while, we've just made a couple of principal payments. So, it's almost exactly what we want. It's just a little bit below that. No, that was for the BB. Thank you. We have about 600, no, it was right at 600,000 left from the proceeds that we still have because we haven't used, we haven't been with it. So, that's what we've been making payments from.
Any other questions? We'll move on to new business.
Yeah, I do have, I mean, not exactly questions, but this, it's a little bit unusual because this decision was made by not members of this council, but the former council. That's where the action was initiated. And now you, Mr. Stump's telling you, you have to initiate the action with the building commission.
That's the building commission purchased. They requested the building commission to purchase the bonds, so then we would have to do the same thing. You have, there's procedures you go through to sell it much, kind of like what we did for the issue of bonds. Where's the building commission? They are, the members of the building commissions, Mary Lynn Flint, Bill Laird, Wes McDonald, Quinn Stewart.
If it were to fail, like the building commission, did we still go to the second round?
I believe. I'm pretty sure because he did mention that.
All right, thank you. Moving on to new business, we have an insurance presentation and a bid opening, Blue Ridge Risk Partners.
I have two bids, and I'm going to open those, and then I will give, I think we have representatives here from both. So, from West, we have it from West Virginia Corp. and Blue Ridge Risk Partners. So, I will open Blue Ridge Risk Partners first. And then, like, play to this. The total premium from Blue Ridge Risk Partners is $393,822. And the next one is West Virginia. And the next one is West Virginia. Is this the total contribution due? Is that the number that I'm looking for? Um, the the total contribution for the city of Oak Hill is two hundred seventy-seven thousand six hundred and eighty-two dollars. So, now.
Evening, Mayor, Councilman. For those that you don't know, I am Mike Malay. I've been working for formerly Jim Library Insurance and now Blue Ridge for the last twenty-nine years. I lived here in the city of Oak Hill my entire life. Familiar with the city and its operations. Like you, I was on city council for over twenty years ago and I know the tough decisions that you have to make. Tonight's decision is a simple decision to make. We at Blue Ridge handled the city's insurance needs since around two thousand and three. Through a municipality program with travelers. We're offering coverage with a comparable insurance carrier and not a risk. Recently, we have been pointed with Selective, who just came into West Virginia and they're not new to our agency. And we're proud to provide you with this pool and then for your insurance renewal. Selective's been insuring municipalities for over one hundred years. We think they're well suited to be a partner for the insurance coverage of the cities. We have also included premium for the travelers you know, as well as two other carriers. So, you can see different things in prices. Like you'll see that Selective will be saving the city over a hundred fifty-five thousand dollars from the travelers. In addition, Blue Ridge has an office just down the street. We've been there for a very long time with people that live in the city. We also pay B and O taxes to the city, over sixty-two thousand dollars in the last five years. My knowledge, your risk pool does not have an office in West Virginia. Also, the risk pool is not protected by the West Virginia Guarantee Fund. With pulling, you pay an estimate for the for the pool's claims and expenses. If the pool's losses exceed the estimates, then you may be assessed for additional amounts. With pulling, you're jointly liable for the debts of the pool, even if you did nothing to contribute to the debts. If the pool loses money, that's your problem and your taxpayers lose money. With our insurance program, you pay a guaranteed fixed premium for full transfer of risk. No matter how many claims you have, you do not have to pay any more premium. With our insurance program, you're not obligated for anything other than your quoted premium. If the insurance company loses money, that's your problem and the stockholders lose money, not the city's taxpayers. I trust with that information, the council will see that our program is superior. It was the right choice to provide proper protection for the city's residents. Only obligation you have tonight is pick the program that was better suited for yourself. Thank you.
Anyone? Anyone from West Virginia, go on.
Good evening. My name is Steve Rawlings. I'm the Director of Operations with WV4. Good evening. Thank you very much for taking a few minutes of your time. Again, my name is Steve Rawlings. I am the Director of Operations with the Risk Pool. The Risk Pool has been in uh service here in the state of West Virginia since two thousand and seven. Uh, I've been with the Risk Pool since prior to day one. I was part of the initial feasibility study that took place in two thousand and six. Uh, I also work with the Claims Operation as well as the Risk Control Operations. A couple of things about the pool to note, this is a member-owned program. It is and it is incorporated in the state of West Virginia. Uh, it is belong, it is owned by the members. Today, we currently serve forty-five, uh, rather forty-nine of the fifty-five counties. We serve right at one hundred municipalities that include cities, towns, and villages across the state of West Virginia. As well as we also provide coverage to about a hundred and fifty authorities. And it will include a variety of authorities, everything from public service districts uh through all uh uh ambulance authorities. Uh, and things that you kind of have up there as far as on those locations. So, you can see that we are a program that is statewide. This program, again, with it being member-owned, does have its advantages from the perspective of. That those that make the decisions over what coverages you receive, the decisions that make uh that are made on the rates that you pay. Uh, as well as off of the services and the coverages that are made. Uh, those are made by your peers that sit on the pool board, that are elected by your peers. And the decisions that they make are impacted directly by, uh, they are impacted by the decisions that they make as well. Uh, there's a few things I'd like to address based upon some of the information. Uh, so I think it's just fair to kind of go across the board. Uh, on the on the program itself. Uh, that's actually true. We are not part of the West Virginia Guarantee Act. We're not part of that. Risk pools are typically in any state across the country, not part of the of a guarantee fund or guarantee act. Uh, when we started, and when I say we, as the West as the West Virginia, at the time it was county's risk pool. Now, it is the West Virginia Communities Risk Pool. Uh, when we started this program uh back in two thousand and seven, uh, this program here had a lot of questions about that. Uh, when it comes to the collections of the funds and the liability that may be incurred upon the entities that participate. And back in two thousand and seven, when the pool started with two point four million dollars in nineteen county commissions, it actually was a really good question. Because that those entities did take a risk into joining the program. Today, we collect over twenty-five million dollars in in uh. Yeah, in what we call contributions, you call premiums, but they are contributions to the program. Uh, we have in excess of thirteen million dollars in excess funds that are that belong to the membership. And for the last four years now, we have given back excess mon- money to our members in the uh status of rate credit. Uh, so while we are not part of the West Virginia Guarantee Act and the statement about there being a potential for an assessment. Uh, I won't tell you that the assessment scenario is not, uh, it's not a provision, it is a provision. But for the fact that for the last sixteen, seventeen years, we have made money that belongs to the members. And understand that those funds do not belong to me, they belong to the state of West Virginia, the members that participate. So, the members that participate, so for example, uh, when we look at the entities that participate on that list up there, so the town of Alderson. Uh, so the town of Alderson there, which is terribly far from here, the town of Anstead, which is just a little bit further north of here, city of Somersville. Those entities own the program and those entities are participating in whatever money that we get back to those members, they will get funds back. Uh, so from that perspective, this program is built around those entities. Couple of other items uh that I think is important to note about the program itself. Really essentially goes into what we do is designed specifically for public entities. That's all we do. We don't do anything else. We only do public entities. And for that matter, the only thing we do would be is actually the three things that I identified to you, the counties, the municipalities, as well as the uh authorities. And so, that is a focus on what we provide and the assistance that we give to our members. I would like to address the scenario of having large losses, because I think that was something that was alluded alluded to in the scenario, if you were to have a large loss, what would happen? Uh, so understand that this pool is re-insured by three uh A-plus rated reinsurers. Uh, from the perspective of, and we have a large loss, that uh the retention that the pool takes is a half a million dollars. So, if the pool actually has a one million dollar loss, we will pay that one million dollars underneath the terms and conditions of our contract. What the pool would then would receive on the backside is a half a million dollars back. So, that in that particular loss, the pool only incurs one half million dollar loss. That works either from a single loss, a single event to a single building. Or that may occur into a scenario that occurred back here uh and on uh June twenty-ninth, two thousand and twelve, which is the duration. That came across one part of the state, came through and came across and went out. Very familiar with the duration. I actually uh own some property over here uh in the area. And I was up here for uh some recreation uh the day after that occurred, so I'm very familiar with what occurred in that. And it came into Wood County, across and left out through Berkeley County and kind of left a trail of 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 destruction. So, the pool itself had one loss at that time and scenario, there was a two hundred and fifty thousand dollar retention on that particular loss. The pool paid over three hundred thousand dollars. It was not a large loss. But understand too that we got back all but the two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. The pool did not incur that three hundred plus thousand dollar loss, the 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 loss that would occur to a large event, to a large structure. We would incur in this particular case a half a million dollars. We would not incur, you know, one, two, three, or a fifteen million dollar courthouse. We would pay for that, but the pool would only incur a half a million. Our reinsurers today are AIG uh for for property. Uh, we use Lloyds uh and Obsidian for our liability. And while we do not have it proposed for you for workers' compensation, we use Safety National, which is the largest uh reinsurer for workers' compensation in the world. Uh, that's the information that I have tonight. I'd be happy to answer any questions. The program again is designed around for and by the members. What we do is specifically designed for the purpose of serving you in the best way that we can. I will make a note of the purpose that we actually have, uh, while we don't have an office in West Virginia. Again, it is, it is incorporated in the state of West Virginia, so the so the dollars you have stay here. When you look at the dollar figure from a percentage percentage perspective, what stays here is a larger percentage than what it would be from a commercial perspective. Because it stays here in the state of West Virginia. Uh, I will say that all of your litigation is handled for by by one of our individuals who's a litigation specialist, who lives in the state of West Virginia. And works from her home office, so all litigation is current in her case. Uh, I certainly appreciate your time. Be happy to answer you subsequent questions if you had any. Thank you so much.
Any questions for Mr. Rawls?
Me? Do you have any questions of me?
Do you have a recommendation?
Based on the price, I would pick West Virginia Corp. I know that um they service many of our municipalities around. That uh it's been a, this program was through the municipal leg and it has worked very well. But that's, you know, Charles's your decision to make. We have had a relation of. A long-term relationship with Mike and. Not Blue Ridge, but the challenges to that, so.
I do have one question for that gentleman again. He starts talking about if you had a million dollar. Uh, insurance claim.
Yes, sir.
You all would only incur a hundred thousand, you would pay the million dollar claim.
Yes, sir.
So, where does the other five hundred thousand come from? Does it come from this city?
Yes, sir. It would come from the reinsurers. Matt, Matt, please.
Yes, please.
That's a great question. I think that's a wonderful opportunity for me to to address that. So, I mentioned the reinsurance element, so I mentioned AIG. Uh, I had mentioned Obsidian and Lloyds, Safety National. That's the reinsurance perspective. So, every insurer is reinsured, whether it's travelers or selective or State Farm or whomever, they're all reinsured. So, when you see the fact that, I I'm going to just kind of give you two two examples here. When you see that during a hurricane in Florida, that State Farm incurred two billion dollars worth of losses. The reality is that, yeah, they probably paid out two billion dollars. And while I don't know what their retention was, my expectation is that their retention wasn't two billion dollars. They paid out two billion and they probably had reinsurance and some treaties which go actually above reinsurance. In those particular scenarios, then they paid out the two billion and they got money back. So, when they're lost, they actually didn't incur two billion dollars. I don't know what their retention is. Maybe it is two billion dollars. I don't know. But in that example, the way we work is with this being a pool, this being focused on the state of West Virginia and all we serve is West Virginia. We have a much, much smaller retention, so we take a five hundred thousand dollar loss on anyone lost. So, a good example would be is if we were to have a courthouse, we would lose a fifteen million dollar courthouse. Let's just use that as an example because we have some. What we would do is, is that the pool would work with the would would work with the um the the member, work with the entity. And understand that our coverage from a uh a property perspective is replacement cost, same square footage, same materials. Uh, same same design, that's what you get. That's that's what we pay for. Um, and then so we would pay the fifteen million dollars out. And in this example, AIG then would come in behind us and after we paid the fif- fifteen million dollars out, AIG, who's our reinsurer. Would then pay us fourteen and a half million, and so the pool would actually only be out five hundred thousand dollars on anyone. So, while we pay that that full loss, again, we're reinsured, just like it would be from any other large insurance entity. But again, it's a smaller scale perspective, because what we do is we provide the opportunity to have that that pricing scenario. And we and we keep our prices stable, our prices remain stable now. Uh, for sixteen years, we haven't had a single increase in our property rates in sixteen years. We haven't changed our crime rates in sixteen years. We continue to add coverage or liability, so there's been a small tick in some of those pieces. Just because we keep keep adding coverages that were not there in the beginning, such as cyber coverage. So, we include cyber coverage in two thousand and seven. Nobody even knew what cyber coverage was. But we got into the, we got into and started providing coverage in two thousand and thirteen for the purpose of the fact that we knew it was going to come. We were, it was going to happen. So, we had cyber coverage for about four years before we had a single single claim and we had it. Uh, the last thing I'd like to, actually, is that, does that answer your question?
That's, I mean, uh, I was just wondering how that would be reoccurred.
Sure. And then we do that, and then every year, we actually negotiate for our rates with reinsurance. So, that's just a small portion of the cost, so that is a portion of the cost of what we pay. And so, what we do with our with our coverage pieces is we negotiate those rates with those reinsurers every year. Uh, we have an actuarial review every year by a fellow of the Actuarial Society. It's the highest designation you can get from the actuary that actually uh does our reviews. Uh, then we have that reviewed with an auditor and those those recommendations on rates. On any money that gets that gets given back, any approval on, not approval, but any uh kind of feedback on coverages that we're going to provide. Those are then given to the to the board that again is elected by our peers. And they make those decisions based off based off of that information, of that annual information from the actuarial review and the auditors that uh that do our review. Um, the last thing I'll say on that is that, and I neglected to mention this in the beginning and I apologize. We are endorsed by the three organizations that over that uh that work with uh public entities. So, the WVML is an endorsed partner of this program. Not only do we, not only do they endorse us, but we provide their coverage. So, we provide their property coverage, their auto coverage, as well as their uh their their public officials and GL coverage. And we do the same thing for the County Commission Association of West Virginia and the West Virginia and the West Virginia Association of Counties. So, not and not only, again, do we provide, uh, do we have uh their endorsement, we provide all three of those entities with their coverage.
Did you bid or vote at the same level that we have now?
Uh, it is my understanding that we, uh, I actually didn't put the put the bid together. It might understand that we matched your deductibles where we would or where we could. In certain cases, it might be a little bit different. But to my knowledge, it would not be any higher. It might be in certain cases lower. The best example would be your crime coverage. I don't know what your crime crime coverage is, but our deductible is two hundred and fifty dollars for a crime for a crime loss. Most crime deductibles that I see are anywhere five hundred dollars or a thousand dollars. That might be a a variation in that, but we should have, based upon the proposal, match what you have. Vivian, can you confirm?
Deductibles on your property is twenty-five hundred. Uh, deductibles on your in the marine is a thousand. Um, general liability, we have them. Uh, autos, on your autos, comp is twenty-five hundred and collision is twenty-five. So, yeah, we tried to match them to what you had, the information that you see. And I will note that I live in West Virginia. I live in Charleston, West Virginia, and I'm I'm boots on the ground. I service West Virginia. I would be your member services representative. So, we have a number of West Virginia folks who uh service our pool. And we operate under the approval of the West Virginia Insurance Commission.
I had something, Adam Dyer with uh Blue Ridge Risk Partners, work with Mike. How y'all doing? I just wanted to make sure that we fully clarified this one specific point that. What we're offering, currently provide for the city is or is an insurance program. And that is a full transfer of risk. You pay a premium, I pay. As Mike said. In a risk pool, no matter how much we want to talk about reinsurance or other things, it's not an insurance program. It's a risk-sharing pool. So, you are jointly liable with the other members of the pool and the pool program is assessable. So, if I were you, I'd probably want to know what that looks like. So if I were you, I'd probably want to know what that looks like as far as, you know, what additional costs you could have, what assessments you could be subject to. Because I I just wanted to simply point out, it it's like comparing apples and oranges because they're not the same. It's quite different than a insurance program where you're simply transferring the risk. So that's all I wanted to add to it. Make sure that was completely clear. And thank you.
I really don't want to disturb anybody as far as the back and forth, but I do do want to address that very briefly. And I'm clearly just I apologize. That's true. Again, I acknowledge there is an assessment provision. This pool has been around for 16 years. We have never assessed a single member for any reason, for any loss, any purpose. Again, we have given over at the end of this, at the end of this year, we'll have given given back more than 1.5 million dollars to our members of money that belongs to the members rather than it being profit to a third party entity, which is fine. It's just different the way that we do it. And in the long term, a public entity can, from a an insurance perspective, they don't call it an assessment, but if you wreck a certain number of your cars, your rates are going up. If 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 that's not an assessment, I don't know necessarily what that is. So if based upon what you were paying for travelers, I don't know what that was. Based upon the information, sounds like it's higher than what it could have been. I don't know if that's an assessment. I don't know what that is, but your rates can go up year after year. Or it can go down. Same thing with the pool. So we've been consistent. We've been stable. I appreciate your time. And then again, unless you have any specific questions on. Appreciate. Thank you.
Sorry. While the pool might have been around since 2007, providing every year counties, it's newer to cities and municipalities. I don't know what year they started that exactly. They could tell you, but the reason that that's important to bring up is there's a lot more exposure now than they used to have. And there are a lot more cities with a lot more claims activities. So the likelihood of possibility of having an assessment is far greater currently than than it was maybe several years ago. So something else to think about. Thank you.
To me, how often do we do this or decide? Well, it'll be news every year, every year, but normally we don't do it every
Three years ago? We actually it was the same two bidders three years ago. And it was 97,000 less than than the Blue Ridge. And here it's 116.
You have any motions, anyone, questions?
Mayor, based on the amount difference that came in and the recommendation of the city manager, I motion that we go with West Virginia.
We get a second?
I'll say.
Motion's been properly moved and seconded. We'd set the bid, North Virginia Court. Any questions on the motion?
Yes. Mr. Gill didn't have one first.
I don't.
I I'd like to make a couple of comments. And first of all, Mike Malley and our lifelong friends. This isn't easy for me, the city of Oak Hill. You know, we're under a financial crunch. We 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 talked about that a minute ago in relation to the BBT building. And it I don't appreciate the fact that Blue Ridge Risk Partners is located in Oak Hill. Pays no tax in Oak Hill. I I do notice that Somersfield and Lewisburg, but that also has offices that were formerly Jim Lively Insurance or the Blue Ridge Risk Partners. And I I I think that's another situation where, you know, sometimes you have to look at your bottom line and I don't like it, but but that's what I'm I'm looking at. It might be different if we had tons and tons of money, which we do not. And the last thing I'd like to say, maybe I shouldn't say it, but I I want to talk to the folks here from Blue Ridge Risk Partners. I I think that the city council and all city councils should treat everybody as as cordially as possible. I don't I don't think you received that treatment the last time you were in these council chambers. Not not just because you didn't get to bid, but but your your presentation was limited and and it was an embarrassment to me. So I I can't apologize. I didn't do it, but but I need to do that apology. That's all I have, Mayor.
Anyone else? All right. We've been properly motioned and seconded. All those in favor?
I'm all opposed.
I believe majority rules here. It's four to two. Motion is carried. Moving along to the consideration to approve the Bears and Brews Festival and the serving of alcohol and wine on July 27th around 4:00 PM to 10:00 PM.
Good afternoon, Mayor. I'm the president of the Black Bear Chapter of Publishers LEMC. I feel this event. I've actually headed it up for the last three years. I've been a part of it for the last seven. And I I'm here to answer any questions that you may have about the event. Stuff like that. Some of you have been present before in the past. And I'd hope that you all had a good time and you'll consider giving us permission to hold this event again. Does anybody have any questions?
Harley spoke earlier and just the same maintain of this plan and and how much alcohol they're allowed to consume.
Yes, that's I mean, we we monitor that. I mean, it's strict, strict to the point that, I mean, some people get upset about it, but that's fine. If you're going to get upset about that, then we don't want you. I mean, we're here to have a good time and to be adults. Have, you know, enjoy ourselves. My club brings people in from approximately 13 states. We're represented. We got people from all over. A good majority of those are police officers. Said we are a law enforcement club. I personally am not law enforcement, but I'm, you know, I'm a veteran. So I fall under the canopy for them. Some of our officers and some of the members of the club, they have talked. And it's just building a network. You know, they they have long lengthy conversations. Another thing that we do is we put, you know, we put money back into the community while having this event. Last year, we donated $1,500 to Colonel Selby in the Fayette County Institute Technology GROTC Program. We did $1,700 to the VFW in Anstead. I'll say it every year, that VFW is the last active VFW in the county. We're the only people supporting them. And all of that comes from this event held that one Saturday afternoon along with everything else that does for the community. And, you know, I'd like to see this community getting more involved. Last year was great. Annabass was there. Mayor, you were there. You guys had a good time. Anybody have any more questions?
Harley, you asked that this year you tell your vendors ahead of time that they need to be licensed with us, with the city to vendors that you that you have coming in to sell things or whatever.
Okay, what what's 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 the change?
Well, it should have been all along. Only festivals that we do not require vendor licensing is Oakley Festival and the Broadway.
Got you. Well, I mean, that's why I'm here. I'm asking the city to sponsor that event. Does that not fall under the same umbrella?
No, we're not sponsoring it. We're not going to make any, we're not going to give you money.
I'm not asking for money. I'm asking you to permit. If you give me permission to have the event like you have in the years past, we we should fall under that same umbrella.
No, that's by ordinance that the Oakley Festival and the Rail Trail Expo is the same thing. I I mean, your vendors are not it's 15 bucks for them to get a license and pay the bill.
The import?
Yeah, I don't.
It's just, I mean, what I'm looking at and the reason I'm taking it further, that's just $15 that's going to come out of the donation pool.
Well, but it helps offset the police officers that we have. We have to shut down the road. We're providing police officers, we're providing to employees from our public work public work department or overtime. So I think you know, we're giving, we are participating in giving, which is something I'd like to talk about. So we will be after we decide on this and we have to vote on another one.
You you said, because it comes, you said shut down the road. What part is a part of Main Street that gets?
Yes, we have. We hold the event right here at the amphitheater and it's from Central to Jones. And that's the part that has to be shut down in order to obtain the license to hold the event.
But there's other, there's other places that you could do that. You just have to have a place roped off for the drink. But this year, I understand you're having more vendors that would require Main Street that you can't use Kelly, so. It it's an, I mean, it's it is an issue for us to close down Main Street. It's not something that's done easily. You have people coming from Jones Avenue, you come from the other way, and then they get here and they can't go anywhere else. And you're trying to tell all the trucks, whoever on our team, that we're having a festival on a certain day and they shouldn't come this way. But I mean, it's not only that. It's just it's other things that I said that we're, the city bears the brunt of any festival that we have. So, you know, it's our guys picking up trash. Keeping, you know, making sure nobody's coming through the roads that and and it costs money. So I I think at least they could pay their license fee.
Harley, can I ask a question, sir? You said that you're actually adding more vendors this year.
Correct.
Not to sound wrong here, but if you're adding more vendors, pay the $15 license fee that we need because we have police officers that'll be there and everything else. I kind of agree with Mr. Meda that $10 for the permits for him just to operate in the city.
The addition to vendors and and the reason I say that is because every year we have vendors paying and they don't show up. Okay, so we we have got things in place now to ensure that our vendors actually show up. And we base that vendor count based off of the square footage of that area that's blocked off. And we have room for those. You know, the first year that I actually was, you know, the front runner for this actual event. You know, we had, I think it was 27 vendors. And we only had 17 show up. We had 10 canceled because there was an 80% chance of rain that morning. It rained for 15 minutes at 7 o'clock that afternoon.
And and I I mean, and I totally understand, but I don't believe that Mr. Meda is, I mean, quite a
I mean, it's just a shock to me because I've been a part of it for seven years and this is the first time. I mean, I thought
last year. I asked for it last year and was told no. So I'm just asking in public this time. I mean, I I, you know, I think the event's fine. I think that council needs to probably direct the amphitheater to come up with some rules on how we handle nonprofits and events. You're going to be, you're getting ready to get faced with another request for the same thing. So what are you going to do for every nonprofit that wants to do this? The Methodist Church is right down on Main Street. What if they want to shut down the street and have a car? You have to think about what are you going to do? Do we have the manpower? I mean, we have the manpower. Do we have the funds for every nonprofit for us to handle the festival or activity? The amphitheater committee is very active, so we're planning a lot of things. We're going to have that ourselves to do. And the people that are having the events, now I know with this event, they're manning the beer, but they're not doing anything else there.
Well, I mean,
And I don't know how it will be with the next one. I don't know. I'm just saying that we probably need some procedures. Our our amphitheater application says that it's $50 an hour for nonprofits. We have, we've never charged that. Maybe we need to start charging.
Well, and I understand that you've had a, he's a program for the last seven years. I mean, I really do. I understand that. And it's great that what you're doing with the money. But as Mr. Hannabass had spoke earlier, talking about insurance, we are under a crunch. It's not nothing that is personal. It's not trying to be personal.
I understand. I'm I'm a 501(c)(3). I'd be happy to write the city a receipt. 35 vendors, we're looking at $525. I will write the city a receipt for that $525 and the city can write it off.
We don't have, we don't file taxes.
I mean, it's just one of those things. We're trying to do something good and put the money back into the community and, you know, we're and we want to grow it too. I I'd hate to see $500 come between that because some vendors may not come.
You know, we get it and we enjoy things at the amphitheater. But if I don't have enough volunteers to help us, let you use that, then we need to relook at this situation. If you don't have volunteers that can pick up all the trash that gets on there, get everything out that you need, move the things that need moving.
I mean, I I clean up every year. I think the only thing that's really left is the trash and the trash cans. We take everything with us. But, I mean, it, we do, I mean, we do police up after ourselves. Really and truly do. I don't think we've ever left it in a disarray. But I mean, I'm I'm willing to play by the rules and that and that's fine. I just I was, I was, I was taken back by that because now it's it's something that you said has been in place and it just wasn't enforced.
But if they have to pay $15 to us, how is that going to affect you?
Well, probably I'll have to, because vendors is the hardest thing to get when you're trying to grow an event. If your event's not big, vendors don't want to come. So you got to give them a cheap vendor price to get vendors in. They see what it's about and then they see what the foot traffic is. And then they want to come back next year. So in order for me to do that and continue to grow this event, I'm going to have to absorb that cost into that so that they're not paying anymore so that we can get them in here and get them seeing what Oak Hill has going on.
What's your fee now?
$35.
$35.
Cheaper than any event around. So it's still hard to get vendors.
You're charging your vendors 35 and you would be actually really only gaining 20 per vendor. You said you have how many vendors?
I haven't. We have enough room for 35, I believe. Last count.
Are you going, are you still going into the hole? In the hole on your beer sales?
Last year, first year that we were profitable, we went from losing $3,000 every year for the event. So this year we made 3,000 and we were able to make those donations based off of the event alone. Years prior, the club has rallied together and still managed to make a donation because that's what we said we were going to do. Years prior, the club has rallied together and still managed to make a donation because that's what we said we were gonna do. So we gotta do that. Once, once we do that and we put that out there and say, hey, we're raising money for this. How, how would my organization look if I said I'm gonna raise money for this and nobody ever seen a check? Or somebody seen Colonel Selby walking around, I was like, hey, did those biker guys ever give y'all a donation? He's like, what are you talking about? I have to hold up my end of the deal.
Well, I'm just suggesting that maybe the beer wasn't the thing to do is that if you were going into the hole, you're going in you're in a deficit on selling beer.
That's, that's not where the, I, I'm, beer's not the loss. You know, the, the loss prior to was just the, the fact that the event was growing and the only thing to grow something, only way to grow it is getting it out there, getting it out there. And now, I mean, we had, we, we checked IDs from South Dakota last year. So, I mean, it's growing.
And, and what you're saying to me is this would be, this would be the individual responsible, the responsibility of the, of the vendors not to.
Right. You just have to tell them that they get the thing.
Yeah. You don't have to.
No, I, I, I'm aware of that, but what, if I'm calling you and saying, hey, you wanna come be a part of my thing, but you need to jump through these hoops first?
Yeah.
Are you really gonna be a part of it?
Uh, for fifteen, I probably would for the fifteen dollars. I mean, it depends.
But if you're a small business and you're wanting to come out here.
What I'm selling, what kinda.
And then, you know, we got the business owners, every business front is given a letter every year with the option to come outside and set up in front of their business for free. Do they still gotta pay the fifteen? They're already a business, right?
They have a business.
Well, I mean, but you see what I'm saying? Those are just things, it's just different. It's a, it's another hurdle that we haven't had to do in seven years. That's, that's my only thing. And I thought that because by us coming up and asking for permission and getting permission from the city, that we fell under the same umbrella as Oakleaf and the Rail Trail.
The reason you're asking for permission, well, you have to have permission through the amphitheater committee to have anything amphitheater. But you're asking for our permission to sell alcohol.
Okay, I mean, and we, we do that.
Yes, you have to get your permit because we write a letter and say it's okay.
Right. And then, but, I mean, we do that. That's not a vendor. That's not an outside vendor. That's.
Right.
That's us.
Saying that because you ask for permission doesn't mean that we're, that it's under our festivals. We're not responsible for your festival.
No, I mean, I know you're not responsible, but I mean, I just thought for that business license thing, because of the way it was in years past. I figured, I just, you know, that's my, my fault for assuming.
The amphitheater committee had events last year and all their vendors got, got their license. And they have a license. Ace has the Mountain Music Festival every year, taking a license. All their vendors get a license. They send them up here and they get licensed.
Well, one of the, one of the things about it too that can happen, and, and first of all, before I get into that, I, you know, I will say it's a great event. Enjoy it. It's a good time. Thank you.
I mean, I, I agree with that also.
Um, one of the, one of the things about licensing vendors is if you, if you have a festival, and I'm not talking about the Oakley Festival number. Well, it, it started with Oakley Festival. If a license is not required and you have vendors on your Main Street like, like you all do, and somebody decides to, somebody's a vendor and they decide not to pay your thirty five dollars, but set up on a parking lot with permission of the, of the property owner. That creates a problem because how could we say it's okay for all these folks on Main Street not to have a license and then, and then somebody's setting up outside of your organization on the parking lot properly.
You get that. I mean, I, I, I would be more susceptible to that if I was asking for an all-day event. I'm asking for a six-hour evening event. So I'm, I'm telling this vendor, hey, you're gonna have to pay fifteen dollars to come set up for six hours. That, that's where I'm.
But if they do anything else, they have a license for the year. I mean, it's, it lasts all year. The Oakleaf is nine to four, so it's not.
I, you know, I, I'm like, I'd like to move on frankly. I'll, uh, and, and it, again, I compliment the event. I think it's a great time. It's a good time for the city. But, Hill, thank you very much for your efforts. And I'll, uh, uh, and I, I, I really don't think it's gonna be that big a deal to have vendors licensed for fifteen dollars. Um, um, so I, I'm gonna make a motion to, to approve the event.
I second that.
Motion's been properly, I'm sorry, excuse me. We've had a motion and we've had a second. Uh, any questions on the motion? All those in favor to approve Bears and Brews Festival? All opposed? Motion is carried.
Thank you.
That letter you need, right?
Thank you.
All right, number four, um, Willing for Hope, this is also a five oh one C three. Wants to close down Main Street and it's actually more of the car show. There's gonna be some vendors here, some products, uh, some actual possible car manufacturers coming. It's gonna be a big to do. There's gonna be bikes and U V's. Um, last year when they did the inaugural, it was, it's, we wanna do something including the city this year. That's what this one's about.
Uh, and she says, Michelle says that uh, they don't have an estimate yet of the number of vehicles. She says if we wanted to set up vendors.
So does that respond to your vibes?
No, it's, it's Willing for Hope. They, they did a, uh, it was a big event down at Ace last year. It was rather large.
I just heard Ace.
And, well, they held it at Ace because it was Jeeps and side by side and off-road vehicles. And Ace actually created, they created some trails down there for them to come and they rode the side by sides all day and um, you know, mud and everything down there. And they had a quite a bit of turnout. And it, it's called Willing for Hope and it is a fundraiser for the National Suicide Prevention. And so all the money that they, they raise goes to suicide prevention. And the, the PTSDs and stuff like that, and the actual rate for that is alarming. The, for, and it goes a lot for youth suicide, to prevent youth suicide and stuff. That's, so that's what the event, Willing for Hope is. And, uh, I believe a lot of it is still gonna be on the Ace property this year with the rides and, and stuff like that. But I think there, in, in growing the event, I haven't talked to her, you know, and I believe, but in growing the event, she's looking to bring, um, just based off what you've said, bring it up into town.
On Friday, it's for Friday night.
Yeah, cause the main event is, it's an all-day Saturday. I've, I've been down at Ace. I, I was down there. Mayor, he come down there to it. There was, um, there was a lot put into it. Uh, and it was really good. Then she said Friday night. Is there a, like, is there a time on there? I, I haven't.
She wanted to start around five. Five, nine, five to ten something.
See on this, but I think it was something.
What's the date?
September twenty seventh.
And is it?
That's when it was last year, wasn't it?
Yeah, it was the last weekend in September. And so is it from, what part, like Central Avenue to Jones, the tip of gold?
And she's wanting to have vendors there too?
Uh, she said that we, it looks, I think she said.
She offered us the opportunity.
If we want to have vendors, but if we wanted to do vendors and make it an event that we could do.
Did they pay fifteen also?
Their vendor, I told her that their vendors would also have to pay even whatever they do at Ace. Those vendors would have to pay. And it's not the point of money. There, I mean, fifteen dollars is not gonna give us the money. It's the part of being fair to your other businesses in town that pay license and pay B N O. Just like Brittany, I don't see her back there, but she has, she has a business in town. And she pays a license and she pays her B N O tax. So are we gonna let every other person that sells cupcakes come up here and do that and they don't have to pay anything? And, and besides the efforts that we put into all these events. And I know we want events, but if it's a volunteer organization, they should have some volunteers that are willing to help.
Is this a one-time, this fifteen dollars, is it a license or is it?
It's a license for a year.
So it's, it's a full business deal for years. That's a pretty good deal.
Yeah, that's what I was thinking.
Normally you're gonna have to pay.
Saying that they're only gonna be able to come up for that six-hour thing, but they could come back up here for this event.
Well, they could come to every event that we have.
For the next year.
If we haven't.
Yeah, that's.
Amphitheater committee has an event here. They can come. Just like the food trucks, they do that. They never question and they'll pay fees to set up as well.
Well, you could, uh, 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 some you can, if, if you get property from a, a permission from a property owner. And it's in the correct zone, you can set up on your own. I just think that was a good thing. I mean, I, I don't think that that's really gonna hurt somebody. Like, like I said, it's for a year. It isn't like you're gonna be out fifteen dollars. I can't even make fifteen dollars if we come to some other events.
The, I, I personally think the events that we have are good. The small festivals and stuff, it promotes the city. It brings people in from out of town and, and it gets our own citizens out and gives them stuff to do.
I agree.
Um, I, I do, creates excitement in the town and I'm for, I'm for this.
We are too. I mean, that amphitheater committee's working harder on trying to keep things out there. Uh, you know, I just want you all to know there's a cost to it. Every time, every time we do it, we're probably paying more than, um, the Bears and Brews Festivals making. That's just something to think about. So when you see cost up, that's what it is. But, and also, you know, we do have to think about, we just opened the door. If you approve this, when you're opening the door for
Is there any limit on how many times a year we can shut down?
No, but your Main Street businesses don't like it.
Yeah. Well, if we put a cap on it, maybe five or six times a year.
What, what else do we close? Um, the, the Halloween thing, we closed for that too, right?
We have Oakleaf and we have this, the Bears and Brews.
I don't know if the state has a limit on how many times they'll let us shut down, but you have to get permission from the state.
Get permission from the state.
Uh, I know.
I don't think they're gonna let you do it every week.
Oh, well, I, I would think too that you have to think about too, we have a, that's an access street to a hospital. I have fielded complaints from the hospitals that were before you. And it's, you know, obviously like that's.
And last year we had one and I shut the street down and they did not come through with what they said. And we had to make them, we rolled them up on Kelly and and then that was my fault for not checking into it more, but it was supposed to be a kids' event and, um, the amphitheater committee had asked that we let them have that and it was not how it was supposed to go. And so we, and, but by the time we figured that out, I had about fifty phone calls and forty-nine of them was from Diane about the street being shut down.
Your business is open and it's Saturday and you have no notice that the street's being closed and we have a lot of customers that come on Saturdays and business customers.
And that's the other thing. We ask the, we ask for people that are having the event to notify Main Street businesses.
We had an.
And, and she told me that she would and she still says she did, but.
That's getting calls from my manager.
Like as far as how often we do things. I mean, we, we just approved the, the, the ones, Bears and Brews, we just approved it. And so right following, we've got one requesting to do the same thing. Um, those two groups.
And there's other ti- the other times that we close down our Christmas parade, homecoming parade. Uh, well, that's during the same day, so.
And then you got the Oakleaf Festival and then we shut it down on Main Street from that, okay, and then
Now tractor trailers are not allowed down sixty-one, so they're coming from town to get on like thing.
That's what they were doing before.
That's a problem. When you, when you block the road off, the reason we do it at Central, if they come, we can send them down Central to Virginia and back around. I moved it up to Oak Hill Avenue. Can't send a tractor trailer. It's a mess.
Do we put up signs on the highway when we, when you become more signs?
We have signs when you come up. We try to turn any tractor trailer down, um, Central Avenue or Chestnut. Uh, all trucks that way. And then, of course, you know, we do it up here, turn them down. But now that they've not, about to go all the way down, they have to turn out and go up Virginia Street back to the, oh, into the water avenue.
I, I'm, since we just approved it for this one, I'd like to make a motion that we approve it for. But then we, um, well, uh, um, and then we look into, I don't know if it's the committee or if it's the amphitheater committee, we wanna charge to look into that. You had a recommendation there? Now, maybe you can make a separate motion, but I, I motion that we, uh, approve this for the Willing for Hope. Fund, fundraiser or their or- organization, their event that they're having that night.
You get a second?
I'll second.
Motion's been properly moved. Second, that the Willing for Hope event be allowed. All those in favor? All opposed? Motion is carried. I believe that's gonna be a five-hour, four or five-hour event. I think it's five to ten. All right, uh, number five. Under new business, Cole Heritage's lease agreement for the use of the upstairs office.
This is a lease agreement. Uh, I think it's in Tyler. Or we rent upstairs to Cole Heritage. Um, they pay twenty-three hundred dollars a month and they are interested in renewing their lease for another two years.
So we accept that.
Certainly.
I'll start it. I don't have a. It's been properly moved. Second, it's Cole Heritage's lease agreement to be accepted. All those in favor? All opposed? Oh, I'm sorry guys, I thought you said something. I like, motion is carried. Thank you. Moving along to number six, resolutions of support for congressionally directed spending applications. Again, with the sanitary board for telemetry.
These are all applications. Tyler, Allison and a whole array of people have been working on uh, applications to be prepared for the congressionally directed spending monies that are available. Manchin, uh, Senator Manchin has opened his applications that are due on the eighteenth. That are due on the eighteenth. I don't think anyone else.
We've heard any of the other ones opening yet, for Congresswoman Miller, or Senator Shelley More Capita, but we're expecting those to open. And these, um. Um, resolutions will apply to the applications for. This one resolution will, support the project and the funding application, no matter how many we submit.
And so the projects are for the, um, the sanitary board will also be doing a resolution for theirs, but. Uh, it would just add something if, if council did so for their telemetry and. Equipment purchase and set for the excavator. And then page three of our park renovation, um. Safety and services is drone, body cam. And then some, Public Works has some equipment that, that you are asking. So our goal is to.
That beliefs think, think we talked about.
The goal is to have some, just have things ready, they've been working hard, and getting things ready to go. So that we're not stuck with a. Like we have been before.
Mayor, if, if no one objects, I, I'd like to move that. We approve all five. Resolutions, unless somebody on council would like to vote on it individually.
Can we get a second? All right, motion's been properly moved, the second of all five, congressionally directed spending applications be accepted, all those in favor?
If I could, I, I'd like to give a compliment to Tyler, Allison, and everybody else that worked on it, and I want to point out that. What we reviewed in our packet, these resolutions, they're, that's the easy part, that's the tip of the iceberg. The applications are extensive, uh. It required a lot of information, a lot of narratives, a lot of research, a lot of. Of coordinating with other entities for support, I appreciate it, because I know what goes into each and every one of those, I appreciate you all. And that's, that's real progress, uh, and I thank you.
And I, I, I mean, that was a very good idea to do and to have these ready, and. Because we've been, I've tried to do one when you're like somewhere, on one of the rare occasions that you went anywhere. And somebody called and said, can you get this, we need to get this application, and it, it's hard.
All in favor? All opposed? Motion is carried. Number seven, appointment of vacant council position to replace war two council position vacated by Charles Smallwood.
Hey, we have several, um. People that are interested in this, they, I put two in today. I sent a write text, I think, and told you that we had two, so. We have, uh, China Parsons, Diane Allison, Josh Davis. Nick Huddleston, Nico De Petri, Petron. Tim Buskas, uh, one is Jason Gill, and one of those is Jason Gill, and the other one is Dave Willis.
Do you have any more?
I have not heard anything, we put today as the deadline, so. I haven't had anybody asking or. Anything, I don't know, have you all had anybody? So I didn't, uh, I think I have it on the agenda that you can point tonight if you don't want to.
So how did you advertise?
Uh, we had it on our Facebook page. And I don't know if they ever got on the website or not, maybe not, I think Valerie was.
It was in the news.
Oh, yeah, it was on the news.
They have to get four votes in order, don't they?
You have to get it for them.
This is where we ask for nominations from this.
Yes, each councilman can nominate one person if they choose, it doesn't require a second. Recommendation with the person with the, who has votes, if there's two candidates. Will drop off and you keep voting, or one of the individuals can see four votes. It's gonna take four votes for an event.
Did I suggest that we have to keep all of that?
Right, yeah, cheers, we go ahead, go ahead. Um, I would ask if any member of council has any name they'd like to put in as nomination to serve, uh, the position of Mr. Smallwood, you know. The Robenfield nominations.
Mr. City Attorney, I would nominate Tim Buskas.
Does anybody else have any nominations they would, nomination they'd like to make?
To nominate Nico.
I pronounced your last name, Nico, please.
Uh, easiest way to say it is just D. Petro, letters and Tro.
Thank you. Yeah, we have two nominations, does anyone else have a nomination they'd like to?
I'd like to nominate Nico.
Yeah, we have now three names to this, anybody who hasn't nominated someone, desire to nominate.
I'd like to nominate, uh, Jason Gill.
Okay, that's, that's the fourth nomination, do we have any, any more names to put in the nomination? If not, then is your motion to close the nomination?
So moved.
Back into that. All favor? Yeah, then, uh, the nominations have been closed, we have four candidates, Tim Bunkus. Uh, Nico, D. Petro, uh, Nick Huddleston, and Jason Gill. And we'll start with, uh, any order that they will make. I'll ask for votes, if you'd please hold your hand up, vote for a candidate, and we'll go one time office. Uh, Tim Bus- Buskas. Nico Petro. He votes, Nick Huddleston. It's one vote. Oh, yes, two, oh, I'm sorry, I didn't see. And Jason Gill. Mr. Gill, we drop off the ballot, and we'll cut, we'll start with the first name again, we're gonna throw it and ask for each of you to vote one time. Uh, Tim Buskas. Nico Petro. Nick Huddleston. We will, we'll go through the na- the numbers again, we'll ask, uh, each of you give a deep thought to who you're voting on. It's two, two and two, so we'll start out with, uh, Tim Buskas. Actually, there being four votes for that, I don't think it's required to call the remaining names. Uh, four votes does constitute four, uh, a majority, because it's required, so. We, we. Tim Buskas would be the, be declared the winner. Probably should have a motion now to make that official.
I'll move to appoint. Tim Buskas to the vacancy on city council on War Two.
I second that.
All right, motion's been properly moved, the second to appoint Tim Buskas to city council, all those in favor? All opposed? Motion is carried. We're on number eight, police hiring.
I believe everybody has a letter from the Civil Service Commission. Recognition is to hire Seth Crozier as a police officer. Which feels one of the two vacancies that we have written.
He's requesting the one tonight.
Motion's just been properly moved, that Seth Crozier be hired to the Oak Hill Police Department, all those in favor? All opposed? Motion is carried.
Thank you. Two weeks from now, if that's okay with you, not, not a minute.
How many positions are open, you say lots? Well, we've come basically to the end of this, um. Anyone wants to make a motion to accept all the reports, except, um, Allison, I know you're here, do you want to come up?
Up to you all, I'm happy to if you'd like. Well, uh, ladies and gentlemen, I guess you know that, uh, we've been really busy with congressionally directed spending requests. Uh, more so than anything right now, five's a big number, uh, the city of Oak Hill. Has never received, to my knowledge, a congressionally directed spending, um. Or has, has not received that money before, is that, that's correct? So, um, this year we're going for five of them, uh, the, the total dollar amount, um, I totaled it up earlier, it's, uh, it's. Over a million dollars that we're, that we're asking for, uh, in funding for various projects, we also identified. A few other projects that didn't make it to that final CDS, uh, request list. And the reason they did not is because we're, uh, going, uh, we're pursuing other funding sources for those. So, uh, Tyler really has been the spearhead in kind of wrangling all the kittens together, so that we'll get all the, be able to get all the work done on these, um. And it's a, it is, is a very big lift, and it's a, it's a huge driver of economic development in our area. Because, you know, we can, we can bring in the new businesses all we want, you know, we can, we can try to attract as many different companies if we want to, but. If they can't all flush the toilet, because we don't have a sewer capacity, you've got a problem, right, you know, if, uh, if our trails aren't in good shape. If, uh, our park, if our quality of life isn't up to a standard that we're happy with, then, you know, any of the other work we're doing is kind of pointless. Uh, so these are, these requests, these spending requests, and these other packages that we've, or these other funds that we've, um. Identified, projects rather, are, are super important, so thank you all for your patience as we work through those. Uh, our Oak Hill Business Owners Association is still going strong. Uh, we are going to start, um, a push for more members for the association, uh, in the next month, we've been a little bit delayed from sickness. Uh, but right now, I think we're at, uh, thirty members, and we're gonna make a push to, to have more members as soon as we can for that, um, it's. Our goal is to raise the, um, so we can all prosper collectively, you know, we, we thrive as a group, the rising tide raises all ships. And, uh, we as business owners are great support for one another. And, uh, we found that we, we work really well together, and we do each other's company, so that's the, uh, the Business Owners Association. Initially was a suggestion of our, uh, Oak Hill City Council, and we've been able to take it and run with that suggestion. So thanks to the council for that, for sure. A comprehensive plan, we've got two bids of the three that we hope to receive, and you will see those in, uh, the share file. Or the SharePoint under city administration documents, um, any questions about those, I'm happy to answer. Of course, that'll go to the planning commission first before it comes to you guys. Uh, we've got additional partnerships, uh, with Love Hope Center for the Arts, uh. More work with our partners for the outdoor, uh, economic collaboration. Uh, Opportunity Appalachia, more funding sources, we have the SBA in today, that's another great source, um. And if we've got any local businesses that have any questions about that SBA program, uh, that Ms. Green was mentioning earlier. Essentially, we as pinheads, for example, as my business, um, we did not receive any floodwaters whatsoever in August when this event. Occurred, I think it was August twenty-eighth was the date. However, what we can see on our balance sheet is typically our busy season starts in November. Uh, our busy se- season didn't really start until the end of December. Uh, so even though we didn't have any water in our bui- in our building whatsoever, we didn't realize we had any kind of impact whatsoever. As the flooding was occurring, what we saw later after the fact was we had a whole customer base. Who weren't coming to our business like they were. Uh, and there are going to be many businesses in Oak Hill who are going to see something like that, maybe they have additional credit card debt. Uh, from a slower turn in business that they weren't anticipating, these, uh, loans from the SBA, this is at a four percent interest rate. And if you've got a credit card right now, you're looking at probably fourteen to twenty-eight percent interest. So these, um, that SBA program is not that complex compared to a lot of the other programs that are out there. Uh, and I'm more than happy to speak with any business owner who has any questions about that, or, uh, who needs help understanding. What that economic impact, uh, from that one specific event might look like on their balance sheet, more than happy to help anybody who reaches out. I think that's all I've really got for, uh, for you all right now, any, uh, any questions for me?
Yeah, I just wanted to point out that, um, with the, uh, congressional, um. Funding that, that you all are applying for, we did receive, the city, the city was benefited upon, uh. It was a pass through to the New River Regional Development Authority in Needleside Park. Funding out is out there, and I just pointed out, because I, I want to make sure they appreciate that, and I believe, I, I can't remember, Tyler, you may remember, was that? This is Miller or?
Manchin.
Manchin, okay, okay, so we appreciate it.
Yes, that was through the NRG RDA, they helped several different, uh, different projects, outdoor recreation related in our area, and it looks like that's, uh. One of the multiple buckets where we have, uh, where our economic development, our areas want to be moving forward, so we're definitely grateful to the NRG RDA for all their work. Senator Manchin's office, and of course Tyler is Johnny on the spot with every project that makes it through to the finish line, so thank you for that as well. Anything else for me? Thanks, guys.
Thank you very much, Ben, do you have anything for us?
I'm at this top now.
Okay.
Move right along.
All right, are you okay? All right, uh, MS Four for you.
Before I do the MS Four, we'll, um, let council know that. We did receive a letter from the county commission, and they have come into an extra. Three point eight million that they have not spent the, of their ARPA money, so. They're having workshops with people that municipalities, PSDs, uh, recreation, there's. It's a bunch of those going on, so we're gonna be hitting them up also. We're part of that money. So that will be coming, okay, so I have a little more, or, um, MS Four. As the storm sewer system across the country age and continue to be tested by extreme weather. Many communities are investing in green infrastructure as a resilient and effective approach to managing the impact of stormwater. Green infrastructure practices such as rain gardens, green rugs. Help reduce and treat stormwater where the rain falls while providing numerous community benefits. Innovative green infrastructure solutions are wise investments that complement more traditional sewer system components. Together, they can work efficiently and effectively to manage the impact of stormwater and to bring value to communities. And we, um, as you know, the sewer has, our sanitary board has been contacting homeowners that have their. Um, downspouts that run into our sewers, they've been asking them to remove those. And so for one of the people, they wanted a rain barrel, and we were able to provide that to them. For the same, maybe just a little bit more than, um, the other. For the same, maybe just a little bit more than, um, the other.
I think it's a pity that it's. It's like, yeah, it lucked it away, and kept the sewer at all.
So, that's something that. Trying to do some of those. Things that help water. And are, and are changing.
Chief Richardson, did you hear anything? Alright, by the way, wonderful open house. It's very educational as well.
Appreciate everybody's attendance.
Absolutely. Can we get a motion to accept all the reports?
I'll make that motion.
Take one second, please.
I'll second it.
Motion's been properly moved, second of all, the report to be accepted, all those in favor? Uh, all opposed? Motion is carried, council comments?
I have a couple of comments, if at all possible, I'd like to congratulate Chief Richardson and the Oak Hill Fire Department on their. Uh, open house that they had last Thursday, I think that that was an awesome job showing the community how the. Fire department operates and letting them know that everything that they do is on the up and up. Uh, we have an awesome fire department, I don't think you'd ask for a better set of guys. Like to give them a big hand for what they did this past, last Thursday. I would also like to say, uh, thanks to Dmitya for keeping us in, uh, formed of what was going on with our sewer department here last week. Uh, her and, uh, Zach both, uh, handled everything with the expertise that we know that she does and that Zach does and I'd like to thank them for that too, great job.
I think we all have the same sentiment on the fire department and just listening to the public down there as, you know, as walking around. Um, it really made a difference, um, I think, for the open house and anyone could come. And there was people there from places I didn't think would come, but they did come and just. I didn't hear anything negative, which in a building that big, you normally hear something, but it was all positive. That's very good, but thank you.
Uh, I have, I have a future agenda item, it, it doesn't have to be for next month, but, um. If, if the city manager could get involved, who she believes should be involved, to look into. Uh, policy of blocking Main Street, the policy of charging, uh. At dinner at vendors, uh, business spots, and to include the farmer's market, festivals. Uh, Rail Trail Expo and all that, see if there's a, to see if there's a recommendation for a better way to do it, that might. At your discretion, it might involve Allison or the, uh, amphitheater committee or, or whoever, uh, has experience along those lines. Past and present. Vendor coordinators for different events and all that, just, just so we have a good grip on it, so it's in a logical. In a logical manner that's fair. It doesn't have to be next month, just whenever you get. Slides together and I, I would, I would say, Mr. Kirk probably has good advice along those lines as well.
Mr. Gill, you want to tell us about this presentation? Well, I believe we've come to the end here, does anyone have anything else to say, are we good? Well, if all mind declare, we are to adjourn, thank you.